Yeah, we are a present room. You know, if there's a...
Be a little...
It'd be a separate...
I'm sorry. Are we talking about meeting? Did everyone present with their key?
All right. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's good to have you here. Pardon me?
Council Barfus is excused.
Yes. Just so you're aware, Council Barfus is excused. He's away on holiday in a nice place. Quite warm. Lots of water.
The Island Province.
The Island Province. Okay. We'd like to have Councilor Evans offer the opening prayer, please.
Heavenly fathers, we meet together this night. We are thankful for the responsibilities which we have to coordinate things for the town. We're thankful for all that we have and all that we will perceive in the future. We're thankful for the nicer weather you always provide for us with us now and now. God is in things we say and do unless we say, "Hallelujah," and bless on Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, counselor. Okay. At this point, I'd like to call for any additions or adoptions of the agenda. If you had a chance to take a look at the agenda. Counselor Van Groot?
Just put Counselor Van Groot on there. For UFL and Island, don't you?
Yes.
You're going to be a...
No, no. Let me... I've got an addition on there. Foyt. Just put Foyt.
Okay. Where would you like to have that put under? New business or other?
Other. Other.
Okay. So that'd be 8B?
Okay. And also, uh... Social media policy.
Pardon me?
Social media policy.
And that would be under other?
Yes, please.
So that'd be 8C?
Thank you.
And will you be addressing that too?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, did you have something you'd like to...
No, I just was gonna...
Okay. Is there any... Anything else that needs to be added there? Okay. If not, then I'll call for adoption of the agenda. Eric Ronan?
I've put the agenda as amended.
Okay. Over paper? Okay. If you had a chance to take a look at the minutes? Of the last meeting?
Yes. There is a typo that need to be fixed, but I think it has been fixed already, hasn't it?
Um, it's not fixed in the agenda package, so it should be noted at the meeting if that's the correction you'd like to make.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in...
Mayor, under where... Where's that in?
It's just on the privacy question. It's just a typo. But it's still part of our council people's statement that the word "it" needs to be "as" rather than "a" simple.
Okay.
And maybe at the end of the page, I think it should be an apostrophe after manufacturer, possibly.
Oh, yeah. So that is a possessive, right?
Yeah. On the...
A vs?
Yeah. Twice... Twice this needs to be fixed.
Okay. Under... At the bottom, where it says "not in manufacturer's defect..."
It doesn't change the meaning...
Doesn't change the meaning at all. Just need to have a constitution of the sector, just to make it possessive.
It's fixed on the...
Like a school teacher coming out in the mayor.
I'm sorry.
Anything else here that we need to discuss with the minutes in? Not... I'll call for them to adopt the minutes. Counselor Creed moved to adopt the minutes. Over paper? Okay. All right. So first thing on our... On our agenda is we have a couple of delegations. We've got the Chinook Arch Regional Library here to represent us. And Robin, Heather?
Heffer.
Keffer. Okay.
Heffer.
Heffer. Will... Robin will present to us some information regarding the Chinook budget. So, Robin?
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Well, thank you for inviting me. I'm here at your EHS. I'm Robin Heffer. I'm Associate Director at Chinook Arch. And as you may recall, I was here earlier in the year just speaking about Chinook Arch and how we fit into our local library service. I'm also joined by the members of your local library board. Just wondering, obviously, as well. So I've... I've got just a very brief presentation. It's in your package there, in the package that I've distributed. There are a couple of things. A copy of our most recent plan of service for the years 2015 to 2018. And when I was here last, that wasn't... It was still in development. It's since been approved by our board. So it's now an official document for Chinook Arch. I'll talk a bit about it in just a moment. Also included there is just an overview of our four-year proposed budget. And... Oh, and a copy of the notes for my presentation as well, so we wanted to follow along.
Just give us a moment, Robin. We'll get this sound system working properly here. Mayor?
What are we getting set up? Can I just ask you something? I seen you have 2015, '16, '17, '18 budget.
Yes.
Do you by any chance have, in your presentation, the 2014 for comparison with the 2015 to see where we're going?
I don't think...
Because it would give us a sense of the increase that you're asking from one year to the next.
I do have... I do have sort of a very general look at 2014. I do have a slide on our revenues currently, but Town of Carstens isn't separated out in any way, but I think that's... Well, no, but yeah, there is something there for 2014. So I do have a comparison for 2014.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just was trying to make sense out of it, and I couldn't really.
Yep, that's right. Yeah, so just to have a baseline to see where you're starting.
How we doing there?
It's coming.
Okay. You ready to go forward? Okay.
And there's a laser? Oh, just that yellow one?
Just for pointing, right? Yep.
No, no, don't put it anybody's eye here or anything.
So, um... Okay, I'll just dive in. If you have any questions at any time, feel free to interrupt me. So just by way of very quick recap, as you know, Carstens is one of 39 member municipalities with the Chinook Arch region. In addition, there is one school authority, and that is the County Board of Education, which joined the system in 2012. You're okay. With money that was sort of coming from the Luttrell Chief of Councils. So about 39 municipal members. We have a system agreement that was signed and first developed in 1992, to which all municipal members or all members actually signed on to. And because that was a long time ago, we need to update our system agreement, which kind of lays out the roles of the region versus the roles of the local library, with how we're sort of planning to put it into action over the coming period. Historically, we've done a three-year planning cycle and a three-year budget cycle. With this... With this change to the election cycle to four years, but actually, we decided it may make sense to change that to four years, just to keep in sync with our member councils. So in keeping with that, the Chinook Arch Board approved a new plan of service for 2015 to 2018 at the August board meeting. That was a result of about probably eight or nine months' worth of needs assessment and consultation with our members and also with our board committees. Came up with that plan of service. This is something we have to do regularly under the library legislation. We're required to submit a plan of service periodically to upper the government, just like your local libraries as well. I want to mention the many of the things that are in this plan of service supports some of your strategic goals as a community. I pulled these from your website, so as you know, having a vibrant library is an important part of a vibrant community. So some of the things that Chinook Arch helps enable is fostering a positive and welcoming environment. Often, when people are new to town, the library's the first place they go when they're raising families. The library's the place they go with their kids. It's a positive... It offers positive recreational opportunities for youth and, of course, for seniors as well, a place to seek entertainment and social interaction. Promoting culture and the arts, improving efficiencies to the provision of service, and that's really what Chinook Arch is about. It's just an excellent example of intermunicipal cooperation, so a bunch of municipalities getting together to basically share the cost of offering this very high level of library service. So we'll talk about funding. Library funding is a real rat's nest in some ways, particularly at the regional level. However, the foundation is municipal funding, and that's true for your local library as well as Chinook Arch. Chinook Arch, a little bit less so. Municipal funding accounts for about 53% of our revenue, whereas for many libraries, it gets closer to 75 or 8%, depending on the municipality. So we get to kind of get a couple layers of provincial grants, and that's why the... That's why it's not quite the same. So there are municipal levies, provincial grants. We get also, when a municipality joins, there are operating grants that come to Chinook Arch on behalf of those residents. Most funding from the province and from... Our funding from municipalities is based on a per capita levy, and so currently, that levy is $10.56. We'll talk a bit more about that in a bit. So we get operating grants from the province. In addition, there are a number of sort of non-cash, I guess, support that we get from the province. So they pay for our connection to the supernet. They pay for your library's connection to the supernet as well. They also fund some online resources. So I'm not sure if any of you have had a chance to try, for instance, Coolplug, which is sort of a Netflix-type streaming video service that was just launched in the last couple of months here. That was... There was some seed funding that came from the province to pay for that, as well as Zineo, the magazine database, the province pays for that. It may provide consulting and other services that we use as well. Any questions so far? I will get more into the nuts and bolts of this in just a moment.
I have one question. Yes. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask a question, but so I don't forget. I'm just trying to understand the statement in there that Chinook Arch was providing of efficient services to members. I'm just... I guess that's what I'm concerned about in regards to the budget increases each year. If that's going to be efficient, I want to understand that efficiency.
Okay. So the efficiency, a lot of it comes from reducing duplication of services. So rather than paying your local library staff to do sort of non-value-added activities like cataloging, putting stickers on books, that kind of stuff, trying to maintain a sort of an IT infrastructure, the lot of the ordering, because each library has its own funds and it makes its own book purchases, but all of that kind of funnels through Chinook Arch, and that allows us to... We spend about $600,000 a year on library materials on behalf of the libraries. And so what that does is it allows us to get a really good discount on library materials, rather than a small library just buying it from a vendor where they were basically paying retail. So it extends... By doing that, it extends, even for the larger libraries like Lethbridge, it extends their book purchasing ability by about 40%. So...
That's a good savings.
It's a pretty good... It's a good savings, yeah, for sure. So it's those types of things that allows your local library dollars to be spent on frontline service programming, collection development, and that kind of stuff. We kind of take care on the stuff that's really much better... It's much more efficient to do it for everyone a lot of once. You know, so there are about 34 libraries in the system. It's not unusual to be ordering 45 copies of a title. So we just order at once. They all arrive. We catalog them all at once. They get sent out in the delivery vehicles. That means instead of 45 people ordering one book, it's one person ordering 45 books and cataloging. So those are... That's some of the examples. We're constantly reviewing our services as well, so everything we do requires personnel. And if you... When we look at the budget in just a moment, you'll see that the buying shares of our budget is personnel in terms of our expenditures. And that's because we don't hold any inventory. Everything that comes through us just moves through. So most of our expenses are people either assisting the libraries or doing network, the cataloging work. But I'll say that some of the things that we're doing, like cataloging, the trend is towards doing less of that in-house and contracting that out. So we do save money in that. So when we... When there's retirement or when someone leaves, we kind of... We reevaluate our services and say, "Are we... Are we doing this in the most efficient way possible?" And there've been a few... There's been a bit of attrition in the last 18 months, and we've seen a couple of positions that haven't been filled. So we don't just hire... We just have people hanging around every once in a while, just to make sure that it stays in place.
Eric Ronan's got a question?
I just have a question regarding one of the statements that you have there. I'm trying to understand how you decide on a budget process. Because here you see the budget's for a 3% annual increase at municipal level. It sounds like you decide, "Well, 3% is a good number, and we're going to apply that every year." Is that the way you do in your budget? Or you're looking at what you need for money and where you can do savings, and then figure out what increase will be annually to the municipality? Just an interest of mine?
Yes, no, that's for sure. What we do is, well, it starts with our needs assessment. So first, we go and talk to our stakeholders and say, "What should we be focusing on? How should we be spending money? What should we be investing in?" So that's where it starts. And then when it actually comes down to the cash or the money part, we do sort of, I guess, a version of zero-based budgeting. So we don't just take what we have and tack on an extra 3%. We kind of look and say, "Okay, we're planning to do this program. We need to have these resources in place, and so it's going to cost that much." And we... Yeah, so for each program, in our detailed budget, we have each program broken down into categories. So we say, "Okay, we, you know, we have this many computers, for instance, and we need to make sure that our computers are not getting too old, so this is how much it's going to cost us to replace some of those computers each year." So it's quite a lengthy process to do the budget. And then... So we kind of do our ideal budget, and then we look at what we project our revenue, and we see how far apart we are. It usually ends, needs going back and reducing our expenses by quite a bit, seeing how can we fit what we want to do within our projected revenue. And so that ends up being a process of making, I guess, choosing priorities.
Okay. Can I ask you another question? Thank you. I just wondering, you talk about program, and you say, "Okay, you need to replace that many," et cetera. But do you have an assessment of your program to figure out if they are needed or not needed, or need to be reduced or enhanced? Do you have such a thing within your budget process?
Oh, we have here...
Because we can always use more money, right?
Yep.
We can too. But we put the big... So I'm asking questions.
Yep. No, it's, um... They're very good questions. It's... We're... Libraries are kind of almost a bit crazy about evaluating their programs. And I think because libraries, we haven't had an increase in provincial funding for five years.
Yeah, I understand that.
And before that, it was 15 years. So we've become quite adept at doing a lot with relatively small increases or static funding. So we're also constantly lobbying, so we've become quite good at, A, making pretty good use of the money, and also making sure that what money we have is going into worthwhile programs. So for instance, one thing that we've constantly come up against is training. Like, one of our jobs at Chinook Arch is to provide training for member libraries, because it's difficult to find professional development opportunities when you're working in a small library, especially if you're... Especially a one-person library. You know, you have to close the library or find someone to come in, babysit the library while you're... You're going to be training. So we're offering all... We have some good expertise at Chinook Arch, and we are offering these sessions, but we only get two or three people. So it's not really a wise use of resources to have someone who spent two days developing a program, and then three people come in for one hour, and then that's it. So that's one thing that we sort of... That came out of our last plan of service is to re-jig our training. And I think I was just saying to Councilor Creed or Councilor Evans that we have just come off our first training day. So rather than having an hour training, we've decided to have a whole day of training. And we saw, I think there were 30, 34 library staff that came into Chinook Arch on that day, and instead of just doing a one-hour session, they did a whole day's worth of training. So four different sessions, and then an informal lunch where they could sort of network and exchange ideas. And so it's a much more efficient way of... A much more effective, actually, way of doing that particular program. Doesn't necessarily cost us any less money. We're going more bang for the investment.
Thank you.
Counselor Van Groot, you have a question?
Robin, I'm sitting here reviewing your budget. You're probably going to explain this in broader terms.
Yes.
Let me ask you this. Are your municipal fees, are they collected through the requisitions? Is that the requisitions to the municipalities?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're talking about... Yeah. Typically, it's a twice-annual...
Amish.
Payment, I guess. We send a letter requesting.
But that's reflective in the municipal fees area right here, in your income, right?
I should maybe just grab that.
And just a follow-up question on that, but maybe the administration has it in front of them. The Carstens payment is about $26,000 roughly? Carstens contribution to that municipal fees line?
I can tell you for 2014, it was $25,000... $24.20.
$25,000-ish.
$24,000.
It's based on the... It's based on the... On your population, actually.
Right.
Times our... But yes, that's the municipal fee. That would be the sum total of all the member fees for the year.
So we can legitimately break it down as 39 communities. It's the per-population, per capita, right?
Yes.
Our requisition per capita?
That's correct.
At 10.56 per capita?
Yes.
Is that ongoing right to the 2018 budget?
Um, I think there's... I have a slide that shows the proposed increases over the next three years.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But overall, the model remains the same. The only thing that changes is the municipal portion of the membership.
And then, once again, just on that same subject, just so I'm on the same page. Based on those numbers, Carstens' contribution represents about 2% of your municipal fees. 2%?
That would be... That would... Well, um... Let me see, because it will be... For 2015, it looks like the total municipal contribution is about $2 million. And that includes the library board, the library board fee, which is a fee that has not changed for many, many years. And that is... The reason for that is because, of course, if we ask your library board for additional funds, then your library board comes back to you and says, "We need more money." And you say, "Well, why do you need more money?" They say, "Well, we need to pay Chinook Arch." And Chinook Arch will ask... They also ask us for more money. So it kind of starts to become sort of a... It's complicated for one thing, and it's also... It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't look good, right? So that... The municipal or the library board fee has been static at $3.07 for many, for many years, as long as I've been at Chinook Arch, probably a decade here. And the reason that that fee is there as a separate fee is that it kind of goes back to the earlier days when they were setting up the system, and it kind of acknowledges that there are things that the library board was paying for formerly that it, under the membership of Chinook Arch, Chinook Arch is now doing under that.
Then further to my question, Robin, and maybe I'm way ahead, but the increase in municipal fees between 2015 and 2016 is $60,800. Now... And if you've got 39 communities with that increase, and Carstens is going to take quite a hit because of the capita, yes, Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a couple of things. When we talked about this before, our 2014 fee was $25,010. 2015, we anticipate to be $25,726, $26,477, and $27,264, and $28,087 is the amounts that we anticipate would be our share of that requisition. But if I might, maybe Robin may be able to answer some of these questions as he goes through his presentation. Some of your questions might be answered. So if we let him finish, maybe, and then I'll have the question.
Yeah. I can talk a bit about how we arrived. I can... I think I can address that as I go along, how we arrived at those numbers. So just to pick it up on the budget. So the Chinook Arch Board approved the budget at the August meeting, and after that, the budget came up to the councils, and as you're discussing right now, the councils are free to approve the budget or not approve it as they see fit. But to this point, I will say we've received 21 approvals and one, I guess, rejection, and the city of Lethbridge has yet to discuss it. In order for the budget to pass, two-thirds of councils representing two-thirds of the population have to approve the budget in order for the membership levy to change, including Lethbridge, because if Lethbridge doesn't do it, then they can't make the population. Okay, so this kind of breaks down our revenue sources for the current fiscal year. So as you can see, just under $600,000 comes from member library boards. That's that $3.57 per capita fee that I mentioned. But $1.4 million comes from member municipalities. That's the municipal component, so the $699 is the component this year. So the total municipal fee is the member library board fee and the municipal fee together, and that's the $10.56 we're discussing. So as you... As I mentioned, 54% of our funding comes from municipal sources. Provincial operating grant, we receive from the province also on a per capita basis, but the catch there is they're paying us on our 2010 population. So... So we're kind of falling farther and farther behind. It's now, we're looking at five years without an increase. So that's it. Based on our actual population growth, about 1.25%, kind of every year from the province. Your local library's in the same state. They also haven't enjoyed a... Excuse me, a funding increase from the province for quite a while. It's overdue. I think we've asked many of our member municipalities to join us in our advocacy efforts this year, and I think this council has sent a letter to the municipal affairs. Fortunately, whole new administration, there are whole new ministers, so we've restarted those efforts with the new Minister of Municipal Affairs and her name, Preemie. And so not to say that it was wasted, you know? Some of those people are still on the Treasury Board and hope that the message got it, and we've got our fingers crossed for 2015.
So do you think we should... We sent that letter to the proper minister?
You know, it would never hurt. There hasn't been much discussion yet about orchestrating a sort of a system-wide or province-wide effort, but I'll maybe... I can check with Maggie and get back to you on that and see what plans may be for that.
Robin, I don't know how many of you remember the talk that the new Municipal Affairs Minister gave, and she did address this. She did say that, in her opinion, there are supposed to be some forthcoming increases in funding to the libraries.
Oh, that would be...
She did say that. Remember that, Marion? And I noted that, and I wrote that down here. I'm just waiting to hear, you know? It'd be nice to maybe send a letter off and ask him, you know, since you did mention it in AUMA, you know? AUMA, you know, have you decided on how much yet? You know, it would be nice to know that, and so I think that would probably be a proper thing to do for us, to send a letter to them, asking that, you know, if they've got that resolved yet, because.
She was a former mayor.
I hope it wasn't loose lips.
At one point in the nineties, I gather, that she was also on the yellowhead regional library service.
Yes. Well, that's, she prefaced a remark that she was on a, you know, very interested library, so hopefully that will happen.
Hopefully, indeed.
Hey, go ahead.
Because it is placing additional strain, like what we see, I'll talk about this in a bit, but it's, it's placing additional strain on municipalities. You're funding your local library service at a greater and greater extent, and you're also, we're also asking you to fund the regional library service at a greater and greater extent too. So the province isn't kind of holding up there in the part. I'll just quickly touch on the other income, a lot of that is additional contributions to the book a lot of it. So part of your membership in the regional library system comes back to your library for spending on materials, so that's two dollars per capita. In addition, most libraries will top that up, they'll contribute extra funds, like Lethbridge alone, I think, puts another three hundred thousand dollars in. So that, that's what a lot of the other income is. Additionally, we have a couple of contracts that generate some revenue for us, we run interlibrary loan service for the province, that generates about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the system. So most of that goes on the library.
Does the conference that we hold make a profit? Does it add any money to this?
No. It's actually subsidized, I think, to the tune of about five thousand dollars. So we see it as a program rather than a profit. It's such a valuable, valuable conference for so many staffs. It doesn't cost us much thanks to sponsorships, but it costs a little bit each year. But it's the best regional library conference in the province.
Yeah.
So this is just a breakdown of the per capita fee. So as you can see, the library board fee remains static. The municipal fee increases by roughly three percent. The overall increase to the total municipal contribution hovers at right around two percent per year. We put those two fees together, so we really try to keep it as close to inflation as possible. We, we do have inflationary pressures as well, a lot of the resources we purchase increase in price, there are salary pressures, we've got fantastic staff, and we'd like to try to keep them. It's tough in a province like this with, sort of, the loud sucking sound from Edmonton and Calgary, you know, sort of, we've lost a lot of our good staff to those towns just because they, you know, it's easy for them to move, and the salaries are that much, much bigger. If you, if you want to take a quick look at this, this sheet here, which does have the, sort of the summary budget, in terms of the municipal fees, what we did is we projected a, so this includes the per capita increase, it also includes a projection for population growth as well. I think we projected population at one point two-five percent. And that's been historically what we've seen in the region for the past decade. Some are growing very fast, Sterling, for example, is experiencing almost double-digit growth, Bullvers is growing like very, very quickly. Some other municipalities are shrinking slightly, but, um, so, but overall, it averages out to about one point two-five percent. So that's what we base our municipal revenue on. As you can see, we haven't projected any increases for the provincial component, we made that mistake last time, we kind of expected the province to at least give us the population component of the fee, so we pay us on current populations, but that hasn't materialized and that got us, well, we got us pretty tight with our budgets in the last couple of years. And then you can see how our, our, our expenses are broken down as well. Again, fairly modest inflationary increases. You can sort of see the structural issue with our funding situation is that we really only have control over fifty percent of our revenue because we can't force the province to give us more money. So that means the one source where we have to increase our revenues to come to these balances. So, yeah, it's not, it's not as sustainable really in the, in the extra long term, so that's why we need the province to step up their share of funding. We hate to look at things like staff reductions, they will be service reductions, and we're not sure. We haven't heard from our libraries that there's anything that they don't need or don't want, so.
Question, Counselor Bagby?
In the budget projections, if the province were to come through with an increase, would there be a corresponding decrease in municipal fees with the municipal requisitions?
That's an excellent question. It's certainly something that could be explored. It would depend on the size of the, the increase, there is definitely some catch-up to be done, but, but something that, that could be on the table for sure.
Well, that was my question, you must have read that.
I can read upside down.
Yeah. And Robin, have, anymore you'd like to?
My last night is just a correction. If you do have any further questions, I'm not sure when you plan to make a decision, but my card is in there, Maggie's card is in there, we're happy to have me, have a discussion, further discussion. Thanks, Counselor Bagby.
Would you be able to leave us one more of those folder, we have a counselor that is missing today.
Sure, I did put one on the empty chair, there's one right here.
That's mine.
Oh, okay. Well, did I miss? Okay, sure, yeah, I do have my own.
Thank you.
So, one more question. So if Lethbridge votes and approves your budget, you're good, you have your two-thirds, whether or not we like it.
At this point, we wouldn't have enough council, that would bring twenty-two councils.
That was one of my questions was going to be, is how many councils so far have approved it?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, and these twenty-six.
Twenty-one out of how many?
Out of thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
So did you have a fair amount of rejection?
Just one so far. Girls has passed.
Thank you.
Would you like to, more, is there anything more that anybody would like to add?
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it very much, it's always good to hear it.
We have more, everybody's coming and being here with you, and we will certainly be discussing this and going over, and we'll let the board know.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Robin, is it your flash driving this light?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody want a drink? Okay. We have some information, MP Jim Hillier.
Okay, I could maybe talk to that if you don't mind. We have, I put this request for decision to allow our MP to work on some of the concerns I feel that we could address, and what we need is support for council to invite Mr. Hillier to come and address those different issues that are listed there. So, Mr. Chairman, what we need to know is, is council is approving of inviting Mr. Hillier to council to discuss the different issues that are listed.
I think that's, I was saying, how does council feel about having our MP come and discuss some of these issues, as the mayor suggested, Counselor Bagby?
Well, an issue on this, on this request form is number four, the hospital issue. And that's, or he addressed it already, you know, fully addressed it.
No, but what we need to know.
Is where it stands is.
Where it stands, and because, having spoken with Mr. Hillier, if it has, MP Hillier, if it has a negative impact, he will correct that. So this is why we need to know.
Then I guess we, we need to have.
Yeah, well, this is why I said, in response to options, we are waiting to hear from Mr. Grant Walker. And on a decision, I say we can discuss one, two, and three for the moment, four, we're waiting to know what the issue is.
Rayan?
Mr. Chairman, you just did hear back from Grant Walker today, and he has had no indication of any correspondence that's gone to the federal government in this regard, so the province and at Grant Walker's level has not been needed to prepare that.
Okay, all right, so at this point, it has no impact?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Wouldn't be any point to have him come yet until we have some information, is that what you're saying?
No, we can very well discuss item one, which is a funding issue of recreational facilities, two, funding of the library, three, social issues on ministry, and five, temporary workers legislation, legislation that's affecting our town really badly.
Okay. All right. Counselor Bagby, what do you think on this?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we're just asking, do we want to invite him to come and meet with us?
Yeah.
During a council meeting, or it's not like an ad hoc committee or something?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, the mayor did receive an email with a couple of dates, I'm just trying to find that email, just give me half a sec.
Sure, the better.
Yeah, one was early October, he was very willing to come and just wanted to know when we could accommodate him in October.
Now, are you talking somewhere after Thanksgiving? Because that's probably when he's going to be home next during Thanksgiving.
Yes, he is in Edmonton right now.
Or Ottawa, I mean.
In Ottawa, sorry. He is in session.
So he might have a day there that he could meet with us before he goes back.
That's what's his intent.
Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
Having him come and, and hear of what our, our concerns and needs are actually strengthens his position in Ottawa. You know, when he has a request from a community, I mean, when he has requests from citizens, that gives him some, some key, you know, some, you know, impact. And if he has requests from, from a, a whole community, that gives him some impact, so I think it would be very valuable that way. We, he helps us, we, we're actually helping him to help us. Go ahead.
All right. The councilors, what are your thoughts?
I have no problem inviting him as long as we have everything set up as to what we know and what we want to.
Well, I'm pretty well, I'm pretty, pretty well laid, laid out here and there.
I think we need to expand those things a little more.
Yeah, of course, of course, but this is just a request for decision.
Yeah, I think we have the opportunity to expand on these questions and, and maybe refine what we'd like to address with him. Absolutely no problem.
That was in fact.
That's, that's my comment, since I'm, you know, concurring with, with Council evidence, in the fact that we as a council.
Yes.
Need to be collective on the knowledge of, of what we're going to ask.
Mr. Hillier.
Specific things.
Yeah, so are you applying, we need to schedule a time where we get on the same page on each of these issues.
Exactly.
Before we have income.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Oh, really?
If you would like me, since I'm the author of this document, if you want me to start to address each issue and create a little bit of a background for each of these issue, and then you could decide if I covered all the points or if I missed some, and then we could, we could decide how to present that work.
Maybe, I, I think that's a good idea, maybe you could do some of that, and then email us out, and maybe we can comment on each of them and add to those.
Then I will do that this week for you.
Okay. Do we need a recommendation to do that, or we just go ahead and do that?
I, I take no thanks.
Okay.
In the meantime, we should still be coordinating that possible date, because I know two schedules could be hard.
Yeah, this is what, this is what.
Yeah, I, I think Marion will do that.
I'm not finding an email on my phone, but the mayor sent it to me.
Yeah, I will resend it to you.
Fine, and then you'll let us know. Counselor Emes?
Like, one thing I would like to know is how many temporary workers we have in town, and how many businesses require more.
Well, I, I do know.
I'm telling you of a few issues that are very, very bad in our town right now.
Yeah, I do know of one lady that's been working here for the last few years, and she couldn't get an extension, she's had to go home.
Yeah.
You know, very wonderful person in the community, was a great asset, but she couldn't get, she's from the US and couldn't get an extension. She has to go back to the US to apply again.
Yeah.
You know, and it, so it is an inconvenience, it really is, so.
And we have one that is in, in town and can't work, waiting for his paperwork because it's a queue. And how do you work with that, it's not possible.
Rayan, you got a comment?
This is also an issue that the AUME Safe and Healthy Communities Committee is addressing as well, that temporary.
And I can tell you that Mayor Zandry, I made that motion.
Yes.
Have written a letter to the ministers, implicated three of them, to address that too. But I think we need to keep on harping on the subject until the federal staff to hear us. One shoe doesn't fit all.
That's right. Exactly. Okay.
So is this going to be at the next meeting? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just so I know, the mayor's going to prepare some additional backgrounder?
Yes.
And you want to discuss these issues at the next meeting?
I think we should.
The next council?
Yeah, next council meeting, yes, we put that on the agenda for discussion. Any other comments on this, or move along?
Do you need that as a motion for?
Recommendation.
Recommendation? Do we need a recommendation?
No, that's okay.
I didn't think so, that asked already. Okay, so we'll move on then to that, to information on the Municipal Government Act review summary. We have, we have before us in your package here, some information about the municipal government review. The mayor and I went to, to Calgary and spent a couple of days there in the process, and it was, it was very good. But there is a lot of information in here, and I think that we need to each take a look at this, this information over the next few days. And then I, I would suggest that, as I'm talking with Marion, that we need to consider any areas of concern that we may have as, as counselors, that you'd like to see addressed with these options to be moved on. So we need to get on this information as soon as we possibly can, because this is coming down the pipeline very quick, and it's going to be on as quick as possible. And so this is what they're saying, this is the summary of the information that they're going to move on, there, there's several options in here, so we need to look at them, and as a council, maybe we can bring back some of the information that we need to, because we need to discuss it. And Mayor?
Counselor, about, no, chair.
I'm a councilor too.
I just, I just wondered, because of the length and, and the great implication of all the changes that are proposed, would it be wiser for us to review that this week? And if council agreed to come and now earlier next week for Program Four to Five, make it a work session where we review this particular document without feeling stressful time?
My, my concern is that an hour's not enough time. I think if anything, we need to have a meeting that we're going to sit down and go over this, because we each need to take time and look this over, because there's some, I mean, there's some very, this stuff is going to affect us a lot in our province. And maybe it's going to take a, a separate work session that we will go through.
Are you thinking of having a meeting this month?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, because I looked at this when I sat down with, with Marion today, and I was thinking, oh my goodness, there's so much stuff here. You know, I don't know how we could do it, sit down and do it in an hour, I think this is, you know, going to take a meeting.
You have two options on everything.
Pardon me?
You have two options on everything.
I realize that, and we're going to have to discuss each of the options and the implications. Counselor Bagby?
Yeah, so if, if I'm understanding you correctly, the end then of our discussion would be to submit a fairly substantial letter to the province stating the town of Cardston's position on every issue is this, whether it be A, B, or an alternate C that we just say, you know, these are.
I don't know that we have an alternate C, and we personally can go on these options just.
Counselor Bagby, if you read a little bit how this document came to be, it was from the consultation with all the municipalities and province, so, all the municipalities and, and partners. So therefore, I think that if we limit ourselves to option one and two, that came from the, the review.
The review sessions, yeah.
From all those partners, so that's where that came from. Okay, so this is why I think, well, there's nothing wrong with finding another option, but I think there, there's a collective effort from all the municipalities and partners to come up with.
I guess I'm just asking, if, if we're relying on the collective effort, which I appreciate, then why even submit a recommendation from our council personally?
Okay, I'll tell you why.
I was just going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
This is a draft.
Right.
This isn't in concrete yet.
Sure.
And so anything that's on here is still subject to.
I guess I'm just asking if we're relying on the collective effort, which I appreciate, then why even submit a recommendation from our council personally?
Okay, I'll tell you why.
I was just going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
This is a draft.
Right.
This isn't in concrete yet.
Sure.
And so anything that's on here is still subject to the possibility of change, you know? And the process, we did the best we could at this whole process. Everybody worked really hard, but we still didn't understand everything that was there. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to take a look at this and say, hey, are we really satisfied with this or is there some concern that could affect our community in a negative way or is there something here that maybe could be tweaked a little bit that's even more positive than it is? Yeah, so that's my, my feeling. Counselor Bankery?
And Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreeance with you that one hour isn't going to do it because there's 54 changes.
Recommendations.
Okay. With, with one to two options plus the current authority right now that's ruled in. So we've got to decide on three, on three different levels. Do we maintain what is presently on that particular act or do we go to option one or two? And an hour isn't going to do it for me.
Well, I was thinking, like when we did our review of our strategic planning, we did a Friday night and a Saturday. Maybe we could do a Friday evening or a Saturday together and go through this and see what we can put. Counselor Pivoy?
Not sure if it would be appropriate, but I'm just, you know, putting this out there. Would it be beneficial in said meeting to have our MLA present?
I'm sure that, I'm sure that M.P. Vicman would be more than happy to come, give some input. I don't think that that would hurt.
But that's after the municipality to decide, right? It's a municipality that needs to decide.
That's right. We need to decide.
Yeah, we need to decide.
Once we decide that we involve the MLA to push our position forward, why not?
Yeah.
But I think we have to make the decision first.
I think that decision is not possible, yeah. Yeah. Counselor Creed?
I just have a question, I'd like to address it to the administration. If, if we have a session, is this going to be considered a council meeting that we need to advertise?
No.
Or is this a more of a strategic planning type session?
You would still notify the public that you intended to have a special meeting, but I would suggest that your discussion would be held in camera because it is a strategic planning session.
I was wondering if we need to, if we need to leave time to advertise this question.
Twenty-four hours is what you need, I believe, according to the act, but obviously more than that is, the more notice you can give, the better, right?
No.
Okay, can we maybe look at some dates then?
Yeah, I think we need to. I guess the question I have, and I haven't seen it in here, what's the, the last possible date?
Deadline?
Deadline that we have here to, to get this information back to the government so that we can, you know, I don't want to have this meeting after the fact.
Yeah.
We need to have it sometime soon, so what are some dates and maybe we need to look at this. We got, obviously we got Thanksgiving weekend coming up. This is Thanksgiving weekend, so that's not going to happen this weekend. What about the week after? What have you got on the calendar there, Marion?
Nothing.
There is some session.
We have a council meeting on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
The fifteenth, there is some stuff going on at the province level with some meeting involving South Row, Southwest. So I don't really know, when is the fifteenth of October?
Wednesday.
Okay, so if we keep a weekend, we'll be okay.
So what's the date on that Saturday?
Are you looking at the Saturday? That's October eighteen.
How does council feel about Friday night or a Saturday? Because it's going to probably be three or four hours anyways.
I prefer a Friday night over Saturday.
You need to be fairly, fairly awake to be able to review 54 things. If you do it after we're tired, I don't know that we...
My preference is a Saturday. What about you, Counselor Pivoy?
I'm good either one.
Hey, Counselor Creed?
I can probably, now which Saturday are we looking at?
October the eighteenth.
After the Thanksgiving council.
There are some Saturdays that I have.
What's, what's the date that?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
That's a, now that's, okay, now that's okay, it's the fourth Saturday. Long as it's not a first or a third Saturday.
No, it's the third Saturday.
That's the third Saturday.
Is it a third Saturday? Oh, you're right. Might be able to make some arrangements then. Somebody has to cover my sign.
Okay. Mayor Cronin?
Saturday is fine with me.
Unless we go in the afternoon.
Be the one, we're, after, morning or afternoon?
I would rather the morning, whatever.
My preference would be morning too.
Yeah.
Pressure in the morning, the plan works a little better.
Let me find out if I can make sure my sign is covered, but I think it is.
Counselor Edmonds?
I would be vying with me.
Saturday morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, I can shuffle things around, but if we started at 10, I would be at the convenience of...
So 10 to 2?
Yeah, 10 to 2.
Okay.
All right, so do we need a recommendation or a motion or that? Yeah, we want to, but...
You need a recommendation and then a motion at council next week.
Okay. Mayor Cronin?
Okay, I make a recommendation to council to have a special training, a special session on the MGA review, October 18th, from 10 to 2.
Okay, Jill, can you read that back to us?
Um, by Mayor Cronin to recommend to council to hold a special session on the MGA review on October 18th, from 10 to 2.
All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Okay.
One more follow-up question on that. With this kind of a discussion on this, would, would it help to have a facilitator, someone guide through that or...
I'm going to say Marion probably could do that by handling it.
I'll facilitate.
Yeah.
I'll have a presentation prepared.
Good.
You just want Tuesday off. You're shuffling things around, I see where you're going.
I don't know how that gives me Tuesday off.
Now I know.
Oh, right then. Okay, we're moving on here.
I'll take it if you hand it over.
Six, six feet, one of the slight results. Marion's going to present the information for, for our information, for, this is FYI. And after, I guess the, we're not going to have a big discussion on this, folks, tonight. We just determine a date, so when council can discuss the results in detail. And when we decide on that date, we'd like each one of you to be prepared to come to speak to the results as you see it. Okay?
Okay, so...
Marion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the public record, the question I will start with is, are you in favor of alcohol sales within the town of Cardston? It was 370, or 347 for and 1,089 against.
Read that one more time.
347.
347.
And 1,089. The second question on alcohol was if the province would amend legislation to allow limited access in our area. Are you in favor of restaurants and/or recreation facilities within the town of Cardston selling alcohol? 456 for and 956 against.
956?
Yes. The second ballot is, are you in favor of allowing backyard hens in the town of Cardston? There was 317 for and 1,108 against. The second question on that ballot, should the town conduct a pilot project to determine the impact and feasibility of allowing backyard hens? 322 for and 1,065 against.
1,000 and what?
65.
Five against, okay.
65.
The third ballot, are you in favor of allowing sporting events to book town-operated fields and facilities on Sunday? 481 for and 960 against.
960?
Correct. And the fourth ballot was, are you in favor of having fluoride in town of Cardston drinking water? 732 for and 703 against. We had 1,451 registered voters.
61 or 51?
51.
51.
Yesterday. And, and at the advanced poll, that includes both.
Yeah.
I just also wanted to do a couple of things here. First of all, I want to thank those in, in the community who assisted us with the club site. Last night during the count, we had 24 individuals here along with Jeff and myself to conduct that count. It takes an army to make this happen and I really do appreciate that. And also I want to express my thanks to the town staff. As you as councillor are aware, this was not all about the vote yesterday. This has been a lot of work leading up to that. So what I also would like to present to council tonight is just the final cost on what we anticipate this public site has cost. The total actual expenditure for printing of ballots, copies, copying for registration forms and training, et cetera, lunch and dinner for the workers yesterday and wages during the hours that were worked for either the advanced poll or yesterday in the training. We paid those hours at $12.50 an hour, so nobody was getting rich off of that, I want you to understand that. The total public site cost was $3,973.46. But there's some caveats to that I'd like to address. First of all, none of the cost of Jeff or us salary or our time spent was included in that cost. Neither of us have received any additional pay as part of this job. So if we look at Jeff and I's wages and the hours that we estimate we put in, not just yesterday, but throughout the process, we anticipate that that's around $4,375. That would include our wages and benefits.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Marion, can I ask you a question? I remember a few months ago when we talked about the possibility of a public site, we asked administration to give us a kind of a sense of what it would cost. And it seems to me it was around the idea of 1750, so we didn't estimate quite right.
I believe we put $3,000 in the budget.
Yes, we had...
We put an additional $3,000.
Okay, so we, and that...
Yeah, and that was anticipated to cover the cost of the actual, I mean, we get paid whether we're...
Right.
Working on the public site or not. Mind you, in this case, there's a lot of extra hours that we, neither of us get paid for. I just, I want a council to have a real good sense of what the actual cost was. And, and I will say with this, it was a little bit unusual because there was a lot of additional hours put in on the public site. So it wasn't simply, here's the question, let's advertise and let's go to public site, okay? We spent a lot of time putting together communication pieces. We spent a lot of time distributing communication pieces. We had five staff that went out for a full day and delivered those communication pieces door to door. So again, this isn't a firm cost, these KDF costs that I've given you, but I just want you to have a sense of what those are. Even though Jeff hasn't been paid, I told him he gets to take a day off in Cape...
In Luau, yeah.
In Luau.
Or are you going to take that day?
Okay. We also have additional, what we consider to be administrative costs that wouldn't be included in that 3,900. Now, again, it's either you're doing one job or another, right? So this is an additional cost to the town, but the hours that were put into the public site, we anticipate in the office was in the range of about $2,350, somewhere in that range. And then also we had public work staff here that assisted the gymnastics club on Monday morning and again this morning. We came in at 7:00 and we took all the gymnastics equipment down and stacked it as you saw in the gym yesterday. And this morning they helped set that all up again. There was a number of us here this morning again. So that was about $300 worth of wages there as well. So cash out of pocket, we're looking at almost $4,000, but there was some additional cost. So if you want to look at the total cost of the public site, we're probably in the range of about $11,000.
$11,000, okay. Well, we really messed them up in our budget, didn't we?
Yeah. I just think it's important to understand the true cost, you know? We didn't, we didn't double budget wages and all of that, so the amount is budgeted, it's there. We're okay, we're not going to be over budget per se, except maybe about the $900, but it's included in the miscellaneous and public relations. But, but there is a true, true cost to, to having one of these, just like an election would have a true cost.
Well, and like what you're saying there, the, it wasn't that they were getting double paid, it was that they weren't busy doing other municipal things, they were doing this municipal...
This was a focus.
Correct. Yep, that's correct. I just, those were the estimated hours that we put in on the public site, yeah.
Right.
Marion?
Counselor Creed, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just was kind of curious, when we, when we set our budget for that, didn't we set that initially when we were only looking at two questions?
Correct. And that, that has complicated the process as well.
Six questions.
You know, last night when we're, when we're counting ballots, it was a lot of ballots to count too, even with 24 people doing the count too. It was a lot of ballots because, you know, we had 1,400-plus ballots cast on four different questions, four different ballots, six different questions, I guess. So, yeah, the, the scale of the public site added to that as well.
So that's over 6,000 questions to be considered and counted. That's a lot.
More people, I mean, obviously there were, there were more people than would have, would have showed up for the original few questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm not suggesting that there's anything wrong with having all those questions because you're, some of those costs are going to be static costs anyways, right?
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with having that many questions, it just, it just adds to the complexity of so...
Mayor?
My, my only question is, how can we be budgeting $3,000 and end up with $11,000? Why is such a gap?
Well, Madam Chairman, we budgeted an additional, sorry, you're not the chairman, Mayor Cronin. We budgeted an additional $3,000 of expense to host the public site, okay? But the wages that is made up in that additional cost is already in the budget.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
The wages in other areas, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
So it was just reallocated wages throughout the year.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah. So it's not that we have to write out an extra check for $8,000?
But that's a true cost.
That's the true cost.
The true cost.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's not exact figures, it's just a best estimate of the hours that we're putting.
Counselor Bankery has something he'd like to say.
Mr. Chairman, would you allow me to ramble for a few minutes here?
Sure.
Just take a little bit of time. I want to go back probably three weeks and do a little bit of a breakdown. Our mayor, about three weeks ago, had a friend pass away just before the AUMA convention. So she had to make a, a quite a decision on how she was going to react to that and still be able to attend the AUMA convention. Things worked out. She attended the AUMA convention. At attending the AUMA convention, she got lost with, for an hour and a half with one of her councillors and his wife.
Did I mention that, councilman?
Then we had a culture week at the, at the same time at the, at the... Then we had a culture week at the, at the same time, at the AMA convention, and our mayor had to hustle back and do, do some work there. Our mayor's had to deal with the plebiscite for about three months, and the questions and the concerns, it's been a very trying situation for our community, but especially for our mayor. As far as I'm concerned, she handled the news media extremely appropriate. Her interviews and the way she protected the council, the administration, and our town are my accolades to you. I would like to ask the council and those present to join me in publicly thanking our mayor during this trial time.
Thank you, Counselor Bangle. We do appreciate all you've done very much.
And we should let Richard rant more.
More of it. I think she needs a.
Thank you.
She is emotional at times.
Yes, you're all going.
Thank you, Counselor Bangle, very, very well put.
Thank you.
Okay, and my opinion, that wasn't rambling, that was very necessary to say. Appreciate all that. Okay, moving on, we have Counselor Creed. Want to ramble too?
I want to ramble just a little. I won't ramble too much, but Counselor Bangle did mention one event that, that the mayor was involved in after the AMA, which is the cultural days. And I feel that was a significant event. I am really sorry that I wasn't able to be there, but could we possibly have a, maybe not tonight, but sometime a more full report on that, on that event? I understand that Counselor P. Boye actually has some video of that event.
I could bring a report with a couple of clips of significance that I think would be worth sharing.
That'd be great.
I think it would be excellent for our council to understand the significance of that event, the flavor of that event. It was a significant event for our community.
Would that be possible to do at the next council meeting? How's our agenda looking for that?
Thursday. Yeah, two days.
Can you prepare that for the next meeting?
Yeah, it would just be a brief report with a couple of videos of significance.
All right, that'd be good. All right, if we could do that, that'd be wonderful.
It was indeed a very special event, very touching.
Counselor Bangle?
I, I work in Lethbridge, and there's three of our clients who are, who are directly related to the Carts, and they all three made it down to that presentation, and they were extremely touched. So it was a fantastic wrap-up of those days.
In fact, I was, I sent an email to Dexter, who said I wanted to thank him and try to see if we could send Carts a thank you to all that participated. But unfortunately, he's a very humble man and did not respond in meaning that is not necessary. But I almost think that maybe for mayor and council, we could send a thank you to, to him as a formal letter with a CC to his chief.
I think that's a great idea.
Make that a recommendation.
Sure. All right, so we recommend that we, well, I write that.
Okay, so we have a recommendation that the mayor write a letter from mayor and council to thank Mr. Drew, Drew Sid for all that he did to make this event possible.
With a CC to his chief.
Pardon me?
With a copy to his chief.
Yes, with a copy to keep these.
Maybe a separate letter or just a CC to Russell Redcrom. He was very impressive.
Yeah, well, that's what I tried to do, but.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it would not give me the.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can we move on now?
We need to vote on that.
We need to vote on that recommendation for that letter? Okay. Yeah, let's have a vote. All in favor? Okay, Carrie? Okay.
So just general, on the plebiscite data, I just thought, you know, because I did the math the first time just now while I was sitting here, and apparently, although not everybody voted on every issue, the issue that had the most votes was Sunday sports on there. I just thought I'd throw that out. And, and then just, just for information, because I know this was just for information, I gave each counselor a copy of, kind of a modified version of Calgary's policy change on fur. And if we were to consider this, maybe I would even recommend that we discuss this in our next council meeting, potentially put it up for a vote. And I don't know if we need to formally put that on the agenda today by a recommendation. We do, then I would recommend that we have this discussion in our next council meeting, and we can amend and then vote on a resolution similar to this proposal.
Mayor, Marion had something she would like to say.
Sorry, I was just going to say, do you want to discuss the plebiscite results as a whole or just the specific resolution?
No, yeah, my, my intention for that recommendation was just this one here.
Just the one that you're.
Yeah.
Sorry, just for.
Thank you.
Mayor Cronin?
I appreciate what you, what you present here. What I think the proper process would be is to really understand the result, understand the validity from a statistical point of view. I can give you the way to really understand that and to put at ninety-nine percent confidence level. I have the math to do that, and I will show you how it's done. And then we will analyze all those results under that statistical model to really comprehend if the result are representative of the whole population, not just of the sample, but of the whole population of political borders. And I think that we'll be more illuminated as a group to have a proper discussion regarding the issue, any of those issues in fact.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, well, no, I'd like to say my, my recommendation is just for council on this particular issue, and I'm looking forward to hearing all of those contributions to the discussion, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I understand you want to, you're making recommendations so that we can discuss?
To, well, recommend council that we discuss, we can even just discuss this proposal, for instance, and amend and change and then vote on.
Well, we first of all need to study the result.
But yes, that's.
Before we can make any decision, you cannot put the cow before the horse.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be prepared for a vote on a motion on this yet. No, I don't think so. I think we're.
You need to have a fair discussion.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it, that's for sure.
And then I'm simply proposing that at the end of that discussion, that this or something similar to this would be voted on.
Counselor P. Boye, that is a perfect time, after we have a discussion and really understand all the facts, to put forward a motion. That's a proper order thing.
So I so.
Can you clarify that motion for Jill's sake?
Sure, yeah. I, I recommend to council to discuss the results of the plebiscite, and the best way for this council to move forward, after which we would be proposing something, in this case, similar to what the city of Calgary voted on, and, you know, of course, modified for our municipality.
Well, what we, how can you already made a decision for council before council discussing it? I find it a little bit odd.
Yeah, I'm not making any decisions, I'm saying that council will make a decision, and the proposal can be this document or any other document, so.
I think once we make a decision, if that is your motion, that is your motion, right?
Which I'm pretty sure in, I would need to recommend to council to discuss in this meeting, so that we can discuss it in the next meeting.
I don't, I don't think so. I think next meeting, we will discuss the present.
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just, am I out of line, or is that the approach or order for something like this to be discussed? Would be to bring it up in this meeting and recommend that council discuss it?
Yes, yes and no. So I understand what the mayor's saying, I also understand what you're saying. So with your recommendation that the results of the plebiscite be discussed at the next meeting, I think is sufficient to put that forward to the next meeting.
Sorry, sufficient to put what?
To, to put your motion forward at the next meeting, if that's what you so choose. If you want to actually put that motion forward tonight as a recommendation, then that's the second alternative, I guess. But if you're not prepared to put the motion on the books, it's a little bit of a gray areas to what you're recommending, whether you're recommending that you discuss the results and perhaps at that point make some resolutions? Or are you suggesting that you discuss the results and you recommend this resolution? That's the confusion.
Sure, yeah, either way, either way, and I can certainly withdraw my recommendation, but I will be moving that motion next week.
So maybe you want.
And I think that's appropriate. I think story appropriate.
Maybe how we can record that then, counselor, is if you make a recommendation that we discuss the plebiscite results at the council meeting to be held October fourteenth, I believe is the date, and then a second motion could be a notice of motion for this motion to be put on the table October fourteenth. If you intend to put that motion on the table.
Yeah, thank you.
And it could be done that way, yeah?
I think that is.
That was certainly the intention of what I came with today, so.
Yeah, okay. So then you're just putting a notice of motion so that.
That is wonderful.
It's not that we ignore it, it's just an order of things.
Exactly.
Work better.
Jill, do you have the, do you understand that yet?
Well, it depends on what he's changing it to be. If it's direct, then council will discuss the results on the side of the next council meeting, and at least we vote it on, and then the other motion.
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
I have.
The first one, yeah. Okay, we all understand that?
Yeah.
Okay?
To be discussed next week.
To be discussed next week, so we have motion on the table to discuss the plebiscite results at next council meeting.
All right.
Period. All in favor?
Yeah.
Carrie? Okay.
And the second motion?
Second motion?
I'm just going to look at the Robert's rules, how to present a notice of motion, if you can give me just.
Sure, no problem, yeah. Doesn't sound like it would be something that needs a vote.
No, I think you just.
I just give the notice.
Give the notice of motion.
To be recorded.
How much time are you going to need? Is this time for a break?
Sure, if you want to take a three-second break.
So should we take a?
I'll give you, you need a motion to.
Okay, what's the motion?
Motion to recess for ten minutes.
Okay. Motion to re-say.
For the time you go downstairs and lose yourself in the hallway.
Okay, we have some motion on the table to recess for ten minutes. All in favor? All right, there we go. You have ten minutes to get lost, to get the hallway.